Okay, well, welcome back, uh, back to the regular a- agenda. Thanks to everybody for participating in the executive session. Uh, we'll go to item four, and this is an action item. It's a resolution of commendation and appreciation of Shay Flaherty-Batine for distinguished service and outstanding dedication to Prosper Portland and the city of Portland. This is resolution number seven, six, zero, one. And we'll start with Lisa Abouaf, interim deputy director and Chabri Vickers, Director of Equity Policy and Communications as initial speakers.
Chabri, did you send me something earlier this morning?
I didn't.
Okay, I will just do this then. I will do it off the cop chair. So, thank you for all joining me. Apologies for not having something prepared. Um, this is what I will say from my head and my heart. I, um, I wish I could be in so many different locations than where I am this morning. Um, I am, um, we have a number of items before us. I think this has been a really, really tough week for the agency. It's been a really, really tough week for me personally. Um, and I know we have, I, I'm assuming Chabri can kind of share the upcoming items. We have a package of items to present before the board that makes fundamental changes in our leadership. Um, and sets a path forward on an interim basis over the next couple of months. And hopefully, Tabo, with that, I will hand it back to you, um, in terms of specific actions.
Uh, okay, and Chabri, were you going to say something?
Thank you so much, Chair Cruz and Commissioners. Um, after you, uh, present the commendation, we do have, uh, some guests who have joined us as invited testimony to share their perspective and their thoughts as well. And, um, I think you have the list of folks and we look forward to hearing from them, uh, here shortly. And so I will hand back to you, uh, for the resolution commendation.
Okay, so what I'll do is I'll go ahead and read the text of the resolution, um, and then we'll go to public testimony. And then, uh, we'll go for, um, any, any board member comments that we have. And then we'll take a vote. So that'll be the order of our, uh, process today. All right, resolution number seven, six, zero, seven. This is a resolution of commendation and appreciation of Shay Flaherty-Batine for distinguished service and outstanding dedication to Prosper Portland and the city of Portland. Whereas Shay Flaherty-Batine joined the staff of Prosper Portland in December twenty nineteen and was appointed as interim executive director on September twenty eight, twenty twenty four. Whereas Shay Flaherty-Batine has served at Prosper Portland for five and a half years as manager, director, and interim executive director. Whereas Shay Flaherty-Batine deserves recognition as an outstanding leader in his role as Director of Economic Development and as interim executive director at Prosper Portland. Whereas in a time of critical transition for the agency, Shay Flaherty-Batine led with both compassion and practicality, providing a steady hand during the hiring of a new executive director and maintaining the agency's mission and work. Whereas Shay Flaherty-Batine has fostered collaboration and communication across all levels of the organization and external partners, particularly Portland's small business community, ensuring alignment with both a- the agency's vision and its financial realities. Whereas under Shay Flaherty-Batine's guidance, the agency remains committed to the implementation of Advanced Portland, including launching a new generation of tax increment finance districts in support of East Portland and the central city. Whereas Shay Flaherty-Batine led the city's economic response to the pandemic and the development and implementation of the Small Business Relief Fund. Whereas Shay Flaherty-Batine led the implementation of Advanced Portland, a call to action for inclusive economic growth, economic development and economic development-related initiatives, including the launch of the Office of Film and Events and the Office of Small Business. Whereas Shay Flaherty-Batine led Portland's economic development efforts through small business support, business advancement, and the Office of Events and Film. Whereas Shay Flaherty-Batine ensured that equity and inclusion were at the forefront of Prosper Portland's economic development work, both internally and externally, including programs like the Inclusive Business Resource Network and Neighborhood Prosperity Network Program. Whereas Shay Flaherty-Batine has diligently and forthrightly carried out his civic duties on behalf of Prosper Portland and in the best interest of the city, and has ably represented Por- Portland throughout the state, across the nation, and internationally. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Prosper Portland individually and collectively commends Shay Flaherty-Batine for his service to Prosper Portland and to the constituency of the city of Portland that Prosper Portland represents. And be it further resolved that this resolution shall become effective immediately upon its adoption. So, very well said, I must say. Okay, so, um, we have several folks lined up to speak, and maybe Shay, if you wanna, if you do, if you wanna speak, maybe the time would be after the board, um, comments, if that's okay? Great. Okay, so first up, we have, uh, Kimberly Branham. Is Kimberly on the line? There she is. Welcome, Kimberly.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Cruz and Commissioners. It's really wonderful to be here with you all to share my appreciation to Shay for his leadership and his partnership at Prosper Portland and his lasting contributions to the community. I don't think it's gonna come as a surprise to anyone, um, in this virtual room to know that Shay is an absolutely ideal colleague. In my five years working with Shay at Prosper, I had the opportunity to see firsthand that he's not only smart and hardworking, he's collaborative, he's trustworthy, he's flexible. He enters the work with curiosity, he embraces innovation, and he's generous in sharing what he knows and lending a hand. Um, he taught me everything I know about teams when we went to the hybrid inver- virtual environment. He was the only one who understood how to make it work, so he, uh, he was very, very instrumental in that transition. But in all things AI, he's, he's just always at the, uh, cutting edge. He creates healthy teams and work environments because he's communicative, he's empathetic, he's honest, he's inclusive, he listens deeply, and he celebrates everyone's contributions. And he leans in and he helps keep things in perspective with his unflappable love for community and his commitment to making a difference. Over the five years that we worked together, he displayed all of these characteristics while playing an instrumental role in all of the initiatives that Chair Cruz just mentioned. These projects that have shaped and will continue to benefit people, communities, and businesses across our city. He came into the organization, um, with a plan to focus on the Inclusive Business Resource Network and Neighborhood Prosperity Initiative Districts and workforce development. And then within about four months, his job entirely changed as he had to pivot to play this leadership role during the pandemic. Um, and he brought so much substance and innovation and, um, inclusion to that work, um, and the lasting impacts of standing up in the midst of all of this turmoil and Office of Small Business that came from the PDX Small Business Hub and the Office of Events and Film, um, where he created from scratch and whole cloth these teams that have done such incredible work. So, as we all know, those were really intense years, and this level of intensity takes a real toll on your loved ones, on yourself. Um, it requires a lot of sacrifice. Um, so I know that, um, his partner, uh, was a huge supporter in that, but that was, it was a really intense period. Um, and so it was no small thing when Shay agreed to step into the interim economic development role during this period of transition for the agency and this enormous transformation of our city government and our governance structures. It was brave, it was selfless, and he showed his dedication to the people and mission of the agency. So Shay, we are all better, and the community is better, and Portland is better for having had the privilege of working with you. I can't wait to see what you do next. I'm so grateful for your friendship, and I wish you the very, very best.
Thank you, Kimberly. Uh, next we have Carmen Rubio. Welcome, Carmen.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Cruz and Commissioners. My name's Carmen Rubio, and I'm honored to be here this morning to share my appreciation for my former colleague and my friend, uh, Shay Flaherty-Batine and his contributions to Portland. When I first got to know Shay, I was a nonprofit director, and he was at Hacienda. And then again, when I served on city council, and when he assumed the role of Economic Development Director, what he brought to the table was, in my opinion, exactly what Portland needed. Steady leadership, values-driven decision-making, and an unwavering commitment to equity and shared prosperity. And as Kimberly mentioned, he led with humility and he led with strength. And he listened to staff, to partners, to business owners, to communities of color, and turned that listening into action. And under his leadership, Prosper deepened its support for small businesses and expanded all those pathways to economic opportunity and kept equity at the center of its mission. And he stepped into the role of interim director during that really challenging time of transition, not just for the agency but for our city. And it wasn't an easy time. We were on a very long road of economic recovery, uh, from one of the most consequential set of years in, in the city's history. And I'd be remiss to not acknowledge, um, how Shay has also made history as the first Latinx, Latina, uh, to helm our city's economic development agency, both as an economic development director and interim agency director. Uh, these are milestones that resonate profoundly for those of us who are striving for true representation in this city. And while Shay never seeks the spotlight, make no mistake, his fingerprints are all over some of the most meaningful work happening at the city today, some of which Kimberly mentioned. From stabilizing small businesses, uh, during this challenging time, to strengthening community partnerships, and to ensuring that Prosper resources reach, reaches those that have, um, historically been left out. And he did this while leading with heart and impact. And for me, Shay's time at the city will be characterized by integrity. He stood, stood firm in advocating for equitable economic development, even when it meant challenging political norms, and reminding us all about the complexities faced by those who dare to lead with conviction. And for those inside and outside government, he's been a trusted collaborator, an advocate for inclusive growth, and a fierce believer in this city. And given my direct experience working with Shay for a number of years, I'll be blunt in saying that I'm deeply saddened by his departure. It's a tremendous loss for Portland. But I will take solace in knowing that his legacy of contributions have permanently changed the way that the city supports equitable economic development. So on behalf of so many of us that worked alongside you, um, I want to say thank you, not just for the roles that you played Shay, but for how you played them with clarity and with smarts and with courage, and always in the service to the people and the communities of Portland. And you leave Prosper Portland and the city of Portland in much stronger than you found it. So I wish you all the best in your journey ahead, and I cannot wait to see what you do next. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Carmen. Uh, next we have Tori Campbell. And Tori, there he is. Welcome, Tori.
My grandmother in her house, she had two types of cups. She had, um, her fine china, which stayed in this wood cupboard and was only brought out maybe once or twice a year for occasions. Then she had in her cabinet an array of coffee mugs. And the china was cute, and it was pristine, but the coffee mugs oftentimes were stained with tea or coffee, had chips or fractures or cracks. And it really symbolizes the usage of them. And when I think about you, dog, you're not fine china. You are that coffee mug, right? You are that which got daily use, benefited, brought joy, brought levity, uh, rejuvenated teens and in your work and in your being, uh, caffeinated the whole city. And I just wanna say how much I deeply appreciate being a part of your journey, supporting you where I could. But more importantly, also just benefiting from the genius has already been expressed, your empathy, uh, your brilliance, and always holding space for community, always holding space for the underdog. And so in this season, as you have really poured yourself out down to the dredge, this is a chance for you now to be renewed. And I just wanna say how much the city has benefited from your service, uh, from your person, but also your willingness to just be used. Chips, stains, fractures, it doesn't matter. You were always willing to be used on the daily for the benefit of others. Much love.
Thank you, Tori. Appreciate that. Uh, next we have Stephen Green, and I think I saw Stephen on there. There he is. Yep. Welcome, Stephen.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Um, man, you're, you're putting me after a pastor, which, uh, anyone speaking after Tori is always difficult. Um, I, I, I'll say this, for, for those that know, I'm Stephen Green. I'm a entrepreneur here in town, but I spent ten years working at Prosper. Um, I've been a business owner for over twenty years. Um, and, and being a very proud black and Latino, uh, Portlander, um, it's been amazing to see how Shay has always navigated community. And as someone that knows what it's like to be in that building and to know what it's like to have your values at time come in conflict with the, 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 the winds of, of politics or of the work, um, I know what it takes to, to show up and take breaths and, 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 and continue to show up for community. Um, you know, my journey in supporting community really started with my dad. And I remember, uh, for those of us that are from Portland, um, some mountain climbers went missing from Oregon Episcopal School back in the eighties on the mountain. And I remember coming home from school that day, and my dad was packing his bag to go, go to the mountain, and we were supposed to do something together. And, uh, he said, sorry, I can't, I can't join you. And I said, why? And he said, well, some people are missing up on the mountain, and I've gotta go find them. And, you know, what he told me, that, that always sits with me, that reminds me of Shay was, um, he said, in order for people to be found, you gotta be looking for them. And Shay, you do that? And you've done that before you were there, and I know you'll continue to do that. And you never let your values not be the center of what you do. And community knows what happened in this moment, and they know where you stand, and there are a lot of people in Portland that it would have been easy to just sit back and let being nice be the thing that pushes us forward. You was like, no. And so I respected you before, and that respect is only and so I love you. I, I hope, I hope we learn from this, and I hope the legacy of our first Latinee director is not lost. And I hope that, um, as we push forward and we become a better city of this, and when people recognize quietly and loudly, um, your contributions and what you continue to bring to the community. And so I'm, I'm super excited about what the next chapter is. Um, but I also know that that chapter will mean, um, you continuing to lean forward with your values and putting community first, even when it's tough. Um, and so, I thank you.
Thank you very much, Stephen. Uh, next we have Donnie Olivera, and I see Donnie's on the, on the screen.
Uh, thank you, Chair Cruz, uh, and Commissioners for the opportunity, uh, to honor Shay and to say a few words. I think it's, uh, easy to, uh, in this moment, think about, um, what we're experiencing as a country and as a city, but I also can't stress enough how impactful, uh, Shay was to me personally, um, as he led Prosper in various roles, and as he really shaped, uh, the future of economic development for the city of Portland. Um, in my, in my experience, in my career, a few leaders, uh, leaders have demonstrated the level of dedication Shay's brought every single day to, to the work. Um, but most importantly, to the people he supported and served. Um, he was a relationship builder, is a relationship builder. Um, he, it was foundational to him that he had strong relationships, um, but he never asked people, um, to do things that he wasn't leading in, um, and taking, you know, taking a lot of risks on behalf of, of our communities and for the organization. His commitment, um, to the mission never wavered, his commitment to his values never wavered, um, especially during tough decisions or uncertain times. And, uh, I will always, um, appreciate that, those lessons, uh, from Shay as a partner. Uh, for me personally now, um, Shay, I just want you to know from me right now, um, how grateful I am to have learned from you, so much from you, in the time we got to work together in your prior role and as your role's interim. Uh, just the integrity and accountability you brought every day, um, always being solutions-oriented but never flinching. Um, I, I was very grateful for that partnership and to have you to lean on, um, things got tough and how you always, uh, were a steady hand and steady partner in that. And so thank you so much. I, I, this is not lost on me, um, that your legacy at Prosper, um, with your colleagues, um, is really foundational to the future of, of equitable development and economic, economic development for the city. Um, I hope that when you have the time to reflect that you can see your legacy is, is clear and that many in the organization and, uh, around the city, uh, are aware of, of how significant of a leader you were and how important you were to, to our future. So thank you so much for that. I mean, and last, uh, Shay, I just, you know, wanna say that your legacy of humanity and just the way you led with heart, um, and compassion, um, is truly inspirational. And I think a lot of us, uh, are gonna benefit from working with you and taking those lessons because, um, it's one thing to, uh, show up when the times are good, but, um, to continue to hold that space when times are hard, like they have been for a while now, um, was, was impressive. And I think you know this, um, but, uh, I, I, you're gonna shine. I, like others have said before, I can't wait to see what you do next, because I have no doubt it's gonna be transformational, uh, not just for, for our communities, uh, but for how we do business, um, wherever you may land. So, thank you so much, Shay, for, um, being an exceptional leader and doing it with grace and, and doing it with, with resilience and vigor and passion, because I think those are qualities that we, we need more of these days. And, um, I think it's been said before, I think Carmen said it surely, um, but it's, it's a loss for us. Um, but look forward to, uh, your future endeavors too. Thank you.
Thank you, Donnie. Um, next we have Ernesto Fenseca. I believe I saw Ernesto. Oh, there he is.
I'm here.
Welcome.
Um, thank you, uh, Chair Cruz, and it's good to see all of you. Um, I, I don't know, you know, I have a lot to say about Shay. You know, Shay and I got the opportunity to work together at the CNA CDC, um. He, uh, he became the director of the Pola Mercado after leading our empresarios of, you know, our small entrepreneurship and innovation team around small businesses. What I can say about Shay is that, uh, he is definitely a good human being. You know, uh, very thoughtful, uh, he pushed the boundaries from this old Latino into, into more of the realm of the Portland, you know, more inclusive and more understanding of, of the new world, um. And that was really annoying to me at some point, but then I learned, and I learned that, uh, that really, you know, that was the future, and either you adapt, you know, and, and move on, you know, or, or, or you don't. So regardless of those little, uh, things that I kept being pushed by my younger staff and, and the stuff that actually knew better than me about this new realm of the world, um, that was really refreshing. Professional speaking, what can I tell you? All of you know that Shay gets things done. You know, he, uh, he's a steady, quiet, when he needs to be allowed, when he needs to be leader. And I sincerely appreciate that, you know, he never had any reservations in approaching me or pushing back on anything that, uh, that needed to, that he believed, you know, he was right. He also was extremely, uh, inclusive of his own team. And, and that, to me, you know, it's, it's priceless for many reasons, you know, on the, on a personal level. So I really dislike managing people, so having somebody that is independent, that can really take the business on their own hands and move on and move ahead with that, that to me is the type of team member that I love to collaborate and work with. Um, I, I, Shay, I know you're not going anywhere. Uh, you know, I, you will be part of this community. You have been, you know, you were part of Prosper Portland before you even were at Prosper Portland. Uh, you know, we were collaborators with them, continue to be today, and I'm sure that no matter where you land, uh, you're going to land on your, on your feet, and you're going to continue being our partner in many, many ways. Uh, I am, uh, fortunate to say that Shay is not just a former coworker partner. He's also a friend. Uh, we continue to advise and counsel on, you know, with each other. And that is the beauty of these relationships, you know, when they are nurtured, when they are respectful, and when they are, you know, open as ours was, we continue that tradition of, of supporting each other. So Shay, we're gonna miss you on that position, but I know, uh, we're going to see you here over and over again. So thank you so much for what you did with Prosper Portland, for showing us the way, for what you did with Hacienda and the Pola Mercado and Empresarios. Muchas gracias, compañero.
Thank you very much, Ernesto. Um, so that's the end of our invited testimony. Uh, Pam, do we have any public testimony? Uh, I'm not hearing anything.
Is there anyone on the Zoom who would like to provide any comments? Hasn't been called yet?
Looks like Pam's, uh, mic is off.
I had to close out my outlook.
Oh, no problem.
Okay.
So although
Yeah, thank you, Chair Cruz. Uh, hi, everybody. It's good to see so many friends. Uh, yeah, more friends than anything on this call. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, it's the, yeah, it's good to see so many friends, familiar faces and new ones. Um, yeah, I just got the notification. I'm out in Seattle with my family, but I, you know, this is such an important moment, um, that I couldn't miss it. And Shay, you know this, um, I've said this to you many times, and, you know, um, you're the type of leader that I would go to battle with, um, and so, and you're a really good friend, uh, and I appreciate the relationship that we built, but also the friendship, and it's rooted, um, it's rooted in community, right? It's, it's rooted in that fight for what's right and, and justice, um, in such a difficult world and such difficult times. Uh, I know we'll stay in touch, and I really appreciate and look forward to whatever's coming next, but more than anything, um, I hope you take the time to yourself and really process and reflect. Um, and not rush into whatever's next, uh, because that next right thing is for whatever your heart tells you and whatever your spirit needs at this time. And so, um, yeah, have a lot of love and respect and appreciation for you. Uh, I look forward to continue to be on this fight for, for what's right, and yeah, it's good to see everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Did we have any, any other, um, public testimony? If not, then what I think we should do is allow the executive team to, um, say a few words if they'd like to. And we could start with Lisa.
Thanks, Tabo. I, I had a chance to share this in front of staff, but I'm just gonna, you know, Shay, it is rare that you get to meet leaders who are naturally charismatic, an amazing combination of kind of fearless with compassion. I have rarely seen somebody who has kind of the incredible backbone and bravery combined with leading from the heart. I will miss you profoundly in a work setting. I will miss you profoundly as a friend. And I, I know I'll, we'll continue to be able to work together in any number of situations. I know we will continue to see each other as friends, but I wanna thank you. This is a tremendous loss. It's not just for the city. It's really for this agency. It is a tremendous loss for this agency and for all of our, the economic development work that really needs to be lifted up right now for this city. It is a massive loss, and I will miss you profoundly. Thank you, Tabo.
Thank you, Lisa. Does anybody else have anything, uh, from the team? Uh, Chabri?
Chair Cruz, thank you so much. Shay, um, you know, you are my day one. Um, uh, when I got here, you took the time to take me to lunch to make sure that I could, uh, step into Prosper, uh, knowing that I first started as an activist. Uh, knowing that I first started as an activist on the other side of the table. And you wanted to make sure that I was set up for success. And so, from day one till today. And forevermore, we will always be partners in not just economic justice work, but work for our community. And you taught me how to do that centered not only from a heart perspective, but with our, keeping our humanity first. Um, when Prosper and, and service and public service work, uh, became too much. And it impacted health and things, you reminded me to stay balanced. And so, um. I couldn't imagine doing this work without you by my side. And I know that the legacy you left will, uh, stay with us here at the agency, not just for me, but through everyone you led. Which is everyone on the team across Prosper, those who have come and left and are board here. You have inspired us and you do it naturally. You have driven us and you have done it with integrity. And we, your legacy that will be left here is about getting things done and getting things done for our community at the center. And for that Shay, you will always be my jefe. Love you so much Shay. I can't wait to get to work with you in other spaces, uh, in the community. Thank you so much, Chair Cruz.
Thank you, Shabri. Anybody else have anything, uh, from the team? Okay.
Chair Cruz, could I say a word real quick?
Yes, please, please, Tony.
Shay, um, my goodness, um, I just want to reflect on the last couple of years, last eight months too, um. Really, really briefly, I think you taught me teams too back in twenty twenty, uh. At the, at the beginning of the, of the pandemic and when we, uh, we had a really, um, work hard on that budget season. Um, but I really truly appreciate all your leadership, all your partnership, everything we worked on over the last eight months, over the last six years. It's been, it's been a lot and I'm, I'm just working with you every day and all your partnership. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tony. Anybody else? From the team?
Chair Cruz, if I may.
Oh, yes, please.
Uh, thanks Chair Cruz and Commissioners. I'll be brief, but Andrew Fitzpatrick, Director of Economic Development. I just wanted to pile on and thank Shay for everything he's given to our agency. To me personally and to the city as a whole. I did not fit, really fill Shay's shoes, of course, uh, as a leader of the Economic Development Department, but. There's so many things that he has built in ways that he has supported the team and built these incredible programs that others have said, but. Community first and built so many authentic and trusting relationships with all these different stakeholders, many of whom we've obviously heard from and spoken to and. Have let their voices be heard over the last couple of weeks especially. It's just been so inspiring to see all those different people from all across our city come forward. Because in many ways, they're testifying to the things that Shay as an individual, as a leader that is so compassionate, but also strong. Has been able to do with them, um, not for them or to them, but like genuinely with them. So, I just. I want to thank him for everything he, he's done and also for his commendation that we continue to move forward. With him in mind. I mean, we're not, we're not letting up and we're not standing back. We're going to continue to, and then we just. Really appreciate everything that she has done for the agency and for the city. So, thank you Shay.
Thank you, Andrew. Anyone else?
Chair Cruz, if I could just chime in on this, um, first, as a matter of business, I just want to make sure that we. That none of the commissioners need to leave right at eleven, because we do need to, you know, take care of our business, but. I'll just leave that there, um, Shay. The two words that come to mind when I think of your leadership here is courage and kindness. It's, I mean, your leadership, the courage you've shown over the last few weeks is, um. Unlike anything I've seen and been up close to. And it's really impressive for someone who's, you know, but are you only thirty-three? I can't wait to watch to see what you do. Okay, thirty-four, alright. That's right, you just had a birthday, um, and the kindness. You know, I think the two go hand in hand and I've really learned a lot from you. Thank you.
Thank you, Hope. Any, anyone else? Okay, if not, then I think what we'll do is go to the Commissioners. Um, would anyone like to say anything? Uh, who would like to start?
I'll start. Um, I'm gonna lift it up a little bit, um. Shay, you're all about change and a lot of folks can't handle change, so I'm just gonna paraphrase a Tupac quote here. We gotta change the way we eat. We gotta change the way we live and we gotta change how we treat each other and you do all of that, um. And know that that is a strength and not everybody has that strength or that integrity to do that, but you've done that, you've shown that. And you walk that and that is a true honor. So, you will be missed, but I know I will see you hanging out somewhere.
Anyone else like to go next?
I'll go next. First, I just want to say thank you Shay. It's been a really crazy eight months. And you not only took on an incredibly demanding role as the Executive Director, but as others have pointed out, it was just. Such a crazy period of time and only hit a crescendo in the last few weeks. So, I want to say thank you to all the work that you did and the sacrifices you made. And I also want to say I'm sorry that this is how it all went down. Um, we're gonna miss you. You're such a loss for Prosper. I don't like it all why you're leaving. But know that you're going out in a blaze of glory, um, and I'm really excited to see what you do next and. You know, we're lucky to have you in Portland. If we can't have you at Prosper, we're so lucky to have you here. So, thank you.
Who'd like to go next?
Alright, so Felisa and I were doing the Zoom window, uh, thing, um. Uh, Shay, I'd like to echo some of the sentiments expressed here, uh, just in terms of gratitude, uh. Organizations and times of transition are, are always difficult to manage and you handled it with. An incredible level of deft diplomacy, kindness and empathy that, that I think. Um, you were the perfect person for the moment in time that, that we needed, uh, to ensure a smooth transition. I'll echo Commissioner Slick's, uh, sentiments. I, I am really saddened, um, by how this all went down. I think in so many industries, um, we celebrate and honor, uh. The, the, the effort that you put in over the last few weeks to ensure that the organization can survive and thrive. Uh, not with the actions that we're contemplating today and, and. Uh, both as, as a member of the Latinx community, but also just as, as a peer, as a friend. Uh, I'm, I'm just heartbroken that this, that this is the conversation that we're having in format that we're having, um. I'm, I'm struggling to reconcile it. I don't, I don't know if, if, if I will understand how we got here. I'm worried about the precedent as this sets for the agency and, and how we, how we build from this and I hope. I hope that we learn from this, um, because I don't want to have a conversation like this again the next time that the agency makes a hard decision or fights. For its, for its staff, for its ability to operate, um. You know, uh, there are a multitude of pathways, um. That you can go from here and I hope that, uh, you cherish the, just the way that the community showed up and everyone showed up at your leadership. Um, I, despite my, my personal sadness in this, I hope that, uh, you recognize that. You are, you are such a loved member of the community and, um. You know, Steve Jobs once got pushed out of Apple and, uh, when he came back, that's when Apple, you know, uh, it hit its highest point. So. Not, not, not to say that you need to start wearing, uh, turtlenecks, but, uh, I do look forward, uh, to, to, to the comeback and whatever shape or form that looks like. Um, because this community will be better for it. So, uh, take some time to go start an animation studio and then when you're back, we'll be ready for you.
Thank you, Marcelino. I think Felisa is.
Yeah, thanks. Um, do not wear turtlenecks. That's, I, I agree with Marcelino on that. Let's just, just start there. I, I just really want to think, you know, I think we have sort of been on this crazy Prosper ride together and I. Want to hearken back to the first time I met Shay was at a community meeting. Where I proceeded to dress him down publicly for the previous actions of the P D C at Prosper. Which is a common theme of mine, um. And I, uh, just want to say like, from that moment, not only did he handle that with like. Grace and joy and kindness and calling in, he then proceeded when I was appointed to the board. If anybody had an excuse to be like, oh God, I do not want this woman on the board. It was Shay. And it was like the exact opposite. It was like, I'm so happy you're on the board. I'm so welcoming. And I thought, really? Cause I just like, kind of yelled to you for about thirty minutes last time I saw you. And I think that that is really, I, I think it, the, an example of the change. That, um, Prosper has taken over the last ten years. And a change to sort of a new world of economic development and the world of urban renewal. And I think, you know, having the staff who have really led and been part of that. And you've been a leader in that. I'm crying a little. I'm sorry. And I am so sorry that this is happening. I feel really embarrassed, frankly. I think it's funny because I feel like it's like, I'm not crying out of sadness because I'll see you around. I adore you and. We'll go to lunch and all those things, but I'm embarrassed. And I'm a little bit, I'm very embarrassed for our city. I think that, you know, there are the right ways and the wrong ways to do things and I think that this was not the right way. Um, I just want to say I appreciate your vision. And it's, sorry. As an advocate for labor. And the workers. I think I appreciate that you put them first. So, thank you and we'll miss you.
Thank you, Felisa. Well, I'll just, uh, just say a few words, um. I just, first I want to thank everybody for their comments before this and I echo and agree with. Virtually everything that's been said, um, and, and I'll, I'll just speak from my own perspective. You know, I want to thank Shay for, um, stepping into. What we knew was going to be a, a, a challenging role as interim Executive Director. And then, of course, it proved to be far more challenging than any of us would have ever anticipated. And he, he took on that initial burden with grace and then he carried himself with grace all the way through. To where we are today and never let up, never wavered from his commitment and from his. Um, uh, desire to serve community and the agency and his fellow Portlanders. And I'm just so grateful for that. I, I can't tell you how much I appreciated working with Shay over the last nine months. Um, you know, we talked a lot and, um, I always, uh, appreciated and respected. Uh, what he was doing and how he was going about things and the kind of communication that we had. And, um, his inspiration and devotion were all inspirational to me. And so, I just am incredibly grateful and, uh, as Felisa said, I'm very sorry that, uh, we're in the. Spot that we're in right now. Uh, we will live to fight another day, uh, the story's not over. So, uh, we'll go on and, uh, we will, um, do some other things. But we're, we're all very grateful Shay for your incredible service and just for who you are as a person. You're a ter- a terrific person and I appreciate you and I appreciate all the sacrifice that your family. Uh, has, has made, you know, in furtherance of your efforts on behalf of Prosper Portland too, because I know that that was not an easy thing. So. Anyway, um, and back to what Serena was saying, I'm gonna end on an optimistic note because like everybody else, I feel like I've seen. Um, some incredible abilities and leadership from you and you're only thirty-four, how can that be? Um, but I know that you have an amazing future ahead. And, uh, you know, I look forward to Senator Shay Flaherty-Batine and, uh. And I, I know that you will be, uh, in service in this community for many years to come and. I'm just grateful for your friendship and I look forward to working with you, you know, in the future as we go along. So, thank you. And Shay, if you'd like to say anything, uh, please do and then we'll go ahead and vote.
I, um, interrupted again. I'm sorry. I, I'm understanding that the YouTube livestream has no audio right now. And I would, I want to make sure that Shay's remarks and the vote.
Hi, Hope. This is Pam. I've been texting with Open Signal. I'm guessing that they're having bandwidth issues. I don't know if this individual is doing it from home. Um, they said that Zoom keeps going out for them, um.
So, it's, they're saying they're able to hear that it's a YouTube issue, so folks are working on it. If you don't mind, just, uh, holding for just a moment, we'll give you an update.
Uh, I am recording the message. Uh, we're recording the meeting as well. I know that's not helpful, but. Okay, he says he's working on it.
I have to say, I'm very disappointed with the quality of recording and, uh, technical considerations this time around. And we need to discuss that.
Yeah, I received an email from Open Signal that they had given the meeting to someone else. I received that about twenty minutes to ten this morning, so.
Unprofessional. We need to address that.
I will. It's not the first time I've had to address them. I, I will and I'll copy you.
Thank you.
We need some audio so that we know if the auto, the audio comes back on, um. I guess I could go back to what I asked before, which was if anyone has a hard stop.
I didn't, I have hard stop. Hope that I was able to adjust some things, so.
Before I get started, I just say thank you all for putting this all together so quickly. It's. Alright.
Are we testing the audio? Should we be chatting? I think what we're going to do is, um, we have a backup recording. Pam is making up this meeting, so we have that for. You know, public meetings and our minutes. So, right now, we're inviting staff to join this Zoom link. And so, we'll see them trickle in hopefully. You can give.
I mean, I'm not going to be sad that my public meltdown wasn't broadcast on YouTube, so I feel like. You feel like great for me, I suppose.
Think I'm gonna do it. I'm gonna start. Is that alright?
We are. We have the backup going, right?
Yep, and it's recorded, yep.
Great, thank you.
Y'all, um, I don't know. I'm speechless. I'm humbled.
I'm so glad I wrote something down because I have no, I'm not thinking straight. So I wrote something down an hour ago and I'm so grateful I did cause I have not. This brain is just full of love and gratitude for all of you, so. Oh, okay. I mean, I may have only been at Prosper for five and a half years. But I need y'all to know that I've grown up alongside this agency. I started working with Prosper in twenty seventeen, the year the agency changed its name from PDC. All of my greatest mentors have served within Prosper Portland. Tori Kimberly, Lisa Chabri, Mitch Doherty, Robert. And Tony Hope, also Stephen Carmen Ernesto, Donnie Aldo, there's too many of you and I'm sorry I can't name you all. What I can say is that today, some of my best friends and my lifelong friends are part of the unstoppable team at Prosper Portland. But I was reflecting that many of you don't know why I do this work and so please indulge me because I don't love telling this story. I was born in Cartagena, Colombia, the son of an Irish-American English teacher and one of his Colombian English students. Which absolutely would not fly today. Shout out to the Me Too movement. Um, but being half-American in Colombia afforded me immense privilege. Schooling, we spoke three languages in the household and I had a ginormous, immense storied, mixed family. With European, indigenous and African legacies across every spectrum of class, culture and race. And all within that privilege, I experienced the best and worst of humanity. By the time I was in third grade, I'd seen people die in the street. Bombs were in occurrence in my city and in my neighborhood, even in one time in my uncle's house. Family members, close childhood friends would go missing from school, kidnapped, held hostage in their own homes. And my mom would take us to the orphanage, I don't know how many weekends, constantly. With toys, with presents and we'd share our joy and we'd play with the kids who'd lost families, too many limbs and their homes. I spent four years living outside the biggest open-faced coal mine in the world because of my dad's job. And we witnessed the ongoing devastation of the Ayu people and I lost most of the lymph nodes in my face due to the pollution. And within all of that, I saw the most beauty, the greatest resilience, joy, dancing, colors, people, flavors amidst all of it. And that is my context. I came to America and I, as a preteen, and I assimilated really hard. When things didn't work out between my parents when I was a teenager, I started working to better myself. And to support my immigrant mother and my younger sister and I have not stopped working since that day. That is who I am. Oh, sorry, I'm gonna try to get through this. And all the while, I've kept my North Star, which is to reduce the suffering in this world and to make opportunities for others. My mom was an entrepreneurial woman. She's a networker, she's a weaver, but she never had the tools and resources to succeed in America. And so she's back in Colombia and I hold her story every day in this work. Ooh, my time over the past decade in Portland, it's been exhausting. It's been social services, community development and asset building and finally the economic health of our city. And there are through lines for it. There's, there's these locuses that I feel through it. There's an undocumented business owner who I worked closely, who's now opening her third location. There's makers and companies that are hiring and growing. There's endless graduations of people who are striving to do more and be more for themselves and their families. And nothing could have prepared me for Prosper Portland. Or for leaving Prosper Portland. The people at this agency are powerful. They can hold multitudes and contradictions with ease. They are excellent and they care. From the first time I met Catherine at the Mercado to now sitting at the ED Chair, Prosper Portland, not PDC. Has been the defining aspect of my adult life. And I wish every staff person could sit in this ED Chair for one day because what unfolds before you. Once you look past the daily transactions, the deals, the grants, the contracts, the speeches, the hearings, the fires. There is so much beauty in the concert of all the pieces of this agency firing together. It is impossible to convey. And I know how hard it is to see the connections between our teams and our work, but I'll tell you it's there. And together we are so much greater than the sum of our parts. For all of you JIS nerds, my mind now holds an overlay of the city, of the joy, the pain, the history, the growth, the success, the failures of this whole city and its communities. And I will never look at Portland the same way again. So I'll just end by saying thank you, all of you board, team, for changing my life, for being my family, for seeing me, for every opportunity and every challenge. Lisa and team, you're gonna be amazing. I believe in y'all so much. I've given everything of myself to this place, to this city and I'm looking forward to taking a break and finding out. How I fit into this tapestry that is this city and is this place. But I, I love you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Shay. We're very grateful for you. Just know that. We love you too. Okay, would somebody like to make resolution, or excuse me, a vote, pardon me, I'm sorry, I'm not thinking clearly. Would somebody like to make a motion uh to approve Resolution Number seven, six, oh, seven? Uh, as a commendation and appreciation of Shay Flaherty-Batine.
I should approve.
Thank you.
So second.
Great, thank you. Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, passes unanimously. Thank you again Shay and thank you to everybody who spoke today and for your um honesty and. Uh, caring and love. It's all much appreciated, so thank you. So next we have item five. This is an action item. Appointing Lisa Booff to serve as Prosper Portland interim Executive Director. This is Resolution Number seven, six, zero, eight. And Hope Whitney will speak.
There's not much to say. I think the title speaks for itself, but if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Great, thank you. And I can answer any questions too, if anybody needs to say anything.
I'd like to move the motion to accept to Lisa as Executive Director.
I second.
Second, okay. Alright, I'll just comment before we vote. Um, again, many thanks and much gratitude to Lisa for stepping into this role. Um, we really appreciate it. It's a, been a difficult time. And um, we just appreciate your willingness to do this and just know how much we are, are grateful for that. So, thank you. Alright, all those in favor of Resolution Number seven, six, zero, eight?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Does anyone have anything else they'd like to say? Okay, well if not, then thank you very much. Um, there are no further items agen, on the agenda. And this Prosper Portland Board of Commissioners meeting is now adjourned. Thanks to all of you and um, we'll see you all very soon.